Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It is Monday, November 9, 2020. It is 7:02 on my watch. We are reconvening for open session. Let the record reflect that there was no reportable action taken during our closed session. Again, it is 7:02 and I'm calling this meeting in order. This evening, we will be recognizing National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. We're also going to be recognizing American Indian Heritage Month. We're going to be recognizing America's Diabetes Awareness Month. There are no public hearings, no ordinances or resolutions for this evening. There is one item for consideration touching on the downtown Bellflower Wayfinding Project. And we have nine items for consideration under consent calendar. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via the computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comments, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comments. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Item number six, Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Santaynez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Here.
Mayor Garza.
Here. Thank you for that, Madam City Clerk. This evening will be led by Councilmember Ray Hamada on our invocation and will be led by Councilmember Sunny R. Santaynez in our Pledge of Allegiance. Please raise.
Yes, we can stand and bow your heads. Let's say dearly Father, again, thank you for your grace bestowed upon us this evening in order to conduct the business of this community. And Father, we thank you dearly for the many blessings brought to us and we have great confidence that the best is yet to come. Father, we ask for your hedge protection during this continued onslaught of this pandemic and pray for our community residents, workers and businesses, government, and organizational leaders and those that protect and serve. As this election season is ending, we pray for peace, unity, and then also collaboration of all. We pray that we all can be spared of detention, harsh disagreements, and divided grounds as there is a reason from the heart that we call our nation the United States. We ask this all in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Let's face our nation's flag, place your hand over your heart, and together we say, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada and Councilmember Santaynez. Item number nine A, City Council Announcements. Let me start it off with, get ready, Bellflower, for the City of Bellflowers Holiday Home Decorating Contest. Show your holiday spirit by decorating the outside of your home and competing in the City of Bellflowers Holiday Home Decorating Contest. Nominations will begin November 2nd and all entries must be submitted and received by 4:00 p.m. on Thursday, December 3, 2020. The Contest Committee will be judging nominated properties the week of December 7. The winning homes will be recognized with a long sign and a certificate of recognition from the mayor and the city council. This program is open to Bellflower residents in single-family homes only. Condominiums, townhomes, apartments, mobile homes, and gated communities are excluded from participation. For more information, please call the Parks and Recreation Department at area code 562-804-1424, extension 2261. Let's move on to Mayor Protem Dan Koops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Edison is calling on all students and scholars to participate in the Edison Scholars Program. This program was created to recognize the makers of tomorrow, students with big dreams to help power the future. Program awards college scholarships to help fuel your passion for making a difference by studying science, technology, engineering, and math. Deadline to apply is December 14, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Applicants must meet the following criteria: Be a high school student with a cumulative grade point average of 3.0 to 4.0 or the equivalent. Live in the Southern California Edison's service territory. Plan to attend a full-time undergraduate course of study at an accredited four-year college or university in the United States for the 2022, 21, 22 academic year. Plan to enroll in an eligible major in computer and information services or engineering, or engineering technology, or management information systems, mathematics, natural resources, or conservation, or physical sciences. Demonstrate financial need. For more information, visit our learn, this is the email, it's learnmore.scholarsapply.org/edisonScholars. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem Dan Koops. Up next, Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor Garza. This year, more than ever, we need your assistance for the holiday food and toy drive. The Bellflower Volunteer Center is working closely with residents, community groups, churches, schools, and service clubs to provide Thanksgiving and Christmas food boxes and/or gift cards to the families in need. Low-income families and seniors are referred by the school district, local agencies, and for assistance during those holidays. Please note that due to COVID-19, we are unable to accept donations of goods as we have done in the past. But for some examples, for Thanksgiving, we are accepting gift cards and monetary donations for canned goods. For Christmas, we are accepting gift cards and monetary donations for to buy the canned goods and then gifts for the children also. If you would like to be a part of this important program or if you have any questions, please contact the Bellflower Volunteer Center at 562-804-1424, extension 2331, or email mnavarro@bellflower.org. Any support that you can help is greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Dutton. Up next, Councilmember Sunny Santaynez.
Thank you, Mayor. The LA County Library is calling all students K-12 to participate in a bookmark contest. You're invited to celebrate books, reading, and art by participating in the county's annual bookmark contest. Participants will compete in one of the four categories for a chance to see their bookmark designs featured at all the local library and across LA County. The deadline to enter is November 15, 2020. To view the complete rules and regulations, visit the LA County Library website at https://la countylibrary.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Santaynez. Up next, Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, the county of Los Angeles is offering free flu shots. Medical experts recommend that everyone six months and older should be immunized against flu, especially people 65-plus years, pregnant women, and also children younger than five years and people with chronic medical conditions. For more information about where to get your free flu shot, visit the public health website at publichealth.lacounty.gov. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada. Moving on to item number nine B, National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. This one's close to me because this disease actually runs in my family. So whereas every November since 1983 has been recognized by the President of the United States as a month to raise awareness about Alzheimer's and acknowledge the struggles faced by more than 5 million Americans and their families currently living with the disease. And whereas Alzheimer's is a heartbreaking disease present in more than 5 million Americans, Alzheimer's is the most common form of dementia and causes people to lose many of the critical abilities they need to live independently. As whereas dedicated caregivers, whether professionals, family members, or friends, are also emotionally, physically, and financially affected by Alzheimer's disease, giving up themselves to ensure those who face it are not alone. And whereas during National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month, we resolve to continue working towards this brighter future as we stand with every person battling Alzheimer's and their loved ones. And whereas this month, let us honor those who have lost too soon, those who we have lost too soon and renew our efforts to ensure more Americans can live their lives with health and happiness. Now therefore, I, Juan Garza, Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim November 2020 as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. Moving on to item nine C, Recognition of American Indian Heritage Month. Whereas National American Indian Heritage Month celebrates and recognizes the accomplishments of the peoples who were the original inhabitants, explorers, and settlers of the United States. And whereas we celebrate the legacy of the first people to call this land home, America's Native Americans have fortified our country with their traditions and values, making tremendous contributions to every aspect of our national life. And whereas Native Americans are business owners, creating good jobs for American workers, teachers educating our children, first responders assisting neighbors in need, and also leaders serving their communities. And whereas our nation is proud of and grateful for its Native American heritage and traditions, including a history of innovation and entrepreneurship. And finally, whereas the essential contributions of Native Americans continue to strengthen our American family and brighten our future together, now therefore I, Juan Garza, Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim November 2020 as American Indian Heritage Month. And last but not least, item ninety, which is Recognition of American Diabetes Awareness Month. Whereas November is National Diabetes Month, a time when communities across the country team up to bring attention to diabetes. This year's focus is on taking care of youth who have diabetes. Whereas diabetes is one of the most common chronic conditions in school-age youth in the United States affecting about 193,000 youth under 20 years old. And whereas regardless of their age, sometimes youth who have diabetes need support with their diabetes care. That's why it's important to help your child or teen develop a plan to manage diabetes and work with their healthcare team to adjust a diabetes self-care plan as needed. And whereas we support those bravely fighting this disease, the families and friends who support them, and the healthcare providers, researchers, and advocates working to reduce this disease's impact on our nation, now therefore I, Juan Garza, Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim November 2020 as American Diabetes Awareness Month. Thank you, everyone, for that. Item number ten, Public Comments. Mrs. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Stewart. If you would like to speak, please use a raise-hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab. If by phone app, it will appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. You will be called upon by the deputy city clerk in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to make comments this evening under item number ten, Public Comments?
Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comments.
Hello? Hello?
Uh, yes. Yes, is this Mr. Gomez?
I'm not sure if he was muted or if he muted himself.
No, I got muted. Can I speak now?
Madam Deputy City Clerk, so we have a member of the public, correct?
Yes, I don't see a hand raised, but it looks like it's Richard Gomez. Mr. Gomez, if you can give me just a moment to get the timer on the screen and then you can begin.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gomez.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. I hope everybody's safe and well. As you can see, my name is Richard Gomez. I am a citizen fairly new to the city of Bellflower. Been here about five years. Love it. Can't say no more of it. The reason for my speaking today is not to take much of your guys' time, but I don't know if anybody been aware of the situation that happened after or during the cruising festivities, you could say, a couple of weeks back. The concern I bring up, a couple of questions I would like to ask the, well, before I go on, Mr. Mayor Juan Garza, I thank you for returning my phone call. I left the phone call concerned, so, but I still wanted to speak to everybody else. Real simple, is anybody aware what occurred and what happened after everybody left? The day after, the non-cleaning and so on, and just the event itself? If I'm correct, cruising means you go up and down the boulevard. You don't park and start having a party. And I live one block away from, I live on Arkansas Street, so one block away from Bellflower. And it seems like it was a party till like 2:00 a.m. I don't know if the organizers were supposed to hire sheriffs, public security. Not only that, we're in a pandemic and there was no social distancing. There was no face mask wearing. If there were, it was under the chin. And I just want the council members to elaborate on what occurred, what didn't occur, and what can we do to fix this. And I render my rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez, for your comments this evening. For the record, I did have a conversation with Mr. Gomez. He reached out to me via, I believe it was a couple mediums, but specifically through my Collin City Hall. And so we were able to have a good, solid, I believe it was a 30-minute conversation where I did hear from Mr. Gomez and his concerns and his observations of that evening. And so with that, I would, I'm hoping, not sure if there's any more speakers regarding this topic. But, so let's do this. Is Mr. Hockman on? I'm not sure if he is. Is he? Mr. Hockman, I was wondering if you could provide us some facts regarding the events that occurred during the last cruise night that occurred here in the City of Bellflower.
Sure. What we had was a little bit of a change from the prior events. I went ahead and talked to businesses and Aldi's after each of the most recent events to get a sense of their impression. And what we had before this last one was almost exclusively in favor based on the extra people downtown, the extra folks that are utilizing the businesses, restaurants, and so on. And their impression was it was, for the most part, orderly and kind of a welcome thing for the downtown. After this last event, the tone seems to change a bit. We had some of the restaurants not so much in favor and actually against it because they were unable to provide their delivery service based on the high number of people that showed up. That event was much more, was well more attended this last time than in previous events. Furthermore, Aldi's parking lot was, even though they tried to designate an area for the cruisers to park and show their cars, that got overwhelmed. Their parking lot was overwhelmed. And I know of instances where Aldi's customer would drive up and just couldn't get in and left and didn't even, you know, go to the store. So in speaking with the manager of Aldi's after this last event, they are no longer willing to support this activity based on it was more of an impact to their business versus an asset. Likewise, a couple of other restaurants fell into that category. So we still have some in favor, but we're seeing a definite trend toward those that were opposed based on the really large number of people that came. And appears, and in conversation with the sponsors, it appears what we had were individuals coming from other car clubs that weren't expected. Apparently, they had scheduled events in their own areas, jurisdictions, and those were canceled. So they came late to decide, hey, let's just go to the Bellflower event. Came very late, stayed very late, and probably were mostly responsible for the problems that our residents, neighbors experienced. That is, people coming unexpectedly, large numbers, staying way too late, not in the same tone and tenor as what the original sponsors were looking for. And they themselves admitted that was surprising and unfortunate. So it did take a turn this last time. And again, the public opinion is definitely going toward, you know, some anxiousness on this thing.
Great. Thank you for those comments, Mr. Hockman. Again, it's good to have that perspective and opinion as well. So, let me do this. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any of the members of the public wishing to make public comment this evening under public comments?
Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any other public comments.
Thank you for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Gentlemen, any thoughts or questions regarding the comments presented this evening? So hearing none, so my opinion is that I think the events, well, I think they started with a certain intent. I think they're, they're kind of, they're growing and they're evolving into something that I think wasn't envisioned. And I think considering the limitations that we have during COVID right now, I think the, I would propose that we encourage that if in the future these happen, that they happen after the COVID pandemic is done. And maybe at that point in time, we explore if there's going to be something like this, how that is conducted. And if not, that at that point in time, the council can decide on what they think is appropriate. But I think for now, I think it'd be appropriate to not encourage or allow for these types of activities during the COVID pandemic. But I don't know if I'm the only one that feels that way, or if there's any thoughts or comments.
Hello?
Okay, so.
Hello?
If that's it, if there's any other comments, then staff, if there's any other questions, let us know. But other than that, oh, did you have something?
There's a lady saying hello, trying to get someone's attention. Did anybody but me hear her?
I was trying to get in. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, I see the raised hand. Okay.
Mayor, I see a raised hand now. It looks like a Ms. Flores. Ms. Flores, if you will give, Mayor, are you going to give her an opportunity to speak at this time?
Absolutely, yes. There was no public comments, yes.
Okay. Ms. Flores, if you will give me just a moment to get the timer on the screen and then you can begin.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Flores.
Hi, I'm Mayor Garza. My name is Lupi Flores and I am part of the Google Car Club that tried to sponsor this event at Bellflower. Our main intent was to try to bring revenue for everyone to go and cruise up and down Bellflower and bring revenue to the restaurants. Fortunately, on this last event that we did have for the Halloween cruise, it was supposed to be a cruise, and like they mentioned earlier, apparently other events had got canceled and came to Bellflower and we weren't intent in expecting this. We did try to control it. We did go to Aldi's and we did not leave until we picked up everything that was there, any mess that was there. And this was like after 12:00 midnight. We also went up and down Bellflower to make sure everything was cleaned up. With our intent, everything was cleaned up and looked good for Bellflower. And our tents for this cruise, we won't be holding anything for or doing any events in November, but we do want to do something in December, which was our goal of doing a toy drive where we will be raising toys or gift cards to donate to the City of Bellflower so that they can have this for their annual gifts for the kids. Also, I would love to have another meeting with the city and going over this and seeing if there's a way that we can continue and try to make this in a better prospect of making things better. Hoping that we will be able to have a meeting again so that we can continue doing this in a better way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores, for those comments. I, on a personal level, I thank you for wanting to contribute, especially during the holidays, towards families and youth. I think, again, considering the situation with COVID right now, I, gentlemen, I would propose that that type of conversation happen with our staff so that they can assess what it is that they have in mind and then we can determine whether it's appropriate or not. I'm not sure if you agree, disagree, have any thoughts or comments? So hearing none, so why don't we just ask Ms. Flores to have a conversation with our, with our, or the organizers, to have a conversation with staff and see exactly what it is that they have in mind and see if it's appropriate.
We can contact the city manager's office and we'll set up the necessary meeting if they want to discuss this further.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. And thank, yes, please.
Yeah, I did, yeah, I guess I lost my thought and I got it back. Sorry about that. We know that it's not a good thing to have the congregation in these parking lots such as Aldi's and Smart &amp; Final. It's packed to the gills. There's certain vendors that actually come out and sell stuff and whatnot. Maybe if we do some kind of enforcement, there's always dollars involved, but if the corporate, Smart &amp; Final and Rite Aid and Aldi's signed off on a letter of agency or something, maybe we can assist in clearing and blocking some of those cars. As Mr. Gomez said, a cruise night is a cruise. Just back in the old days, as we all did in the 70s. The loitering, the parties, the barbecues in the parking lots is not part of a cruise. And I get what the residents are upset about. And not, what we got wasn't what was advertised, so to speak. And that's why some of the merchants have decided to part ways with it. But maybe the car club can do a little better. And or maybe the city can do something and a little help in enforcement. Because if it comes, we need to monitor it and make sure it's a safe. We don't want any rogue hijackers coming to someone else's event and causing troubles because we all know that something bad can really happen. But we need to figure it out. That's it.
Thank you for that, Mr. Dutton. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that, for me, the best approach for this time is have the organizers speak with staff and kind of so that they can lay out the plans. And if staff feels that it should move forward, then our city manager can relay the message to us. If not, then we're done.
Yeah, I agree. I would reiterate the mayor's previous comment, though, as I'm really unwilling, frankly, to start organizing this with them until after it's safe to deal with from the COVID issue. And it becomes a city-sponsored event. I don't think we want to do that at COVID time of COVID. But once we start seeing some clearance and some relief from the county, I think we can move forward with this and start again.
Yeah, and just again, to reiterate, it's not a city-sponsored event. It never was. But I think in the future, if and when it happens, I would highly encourage that this be, just like any other event where it's, an application is submitted to the city for approval and consideration by the appropriate entities in our city, including our city council if so needed. So that way, everyone's well aware of what we're getting into here. So, so thank you again, Mr. Gomez and Ms. Flores, for those comments. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any of the members of the public wishing to make comments in their public comments this evening?
Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Great, great. Thank you for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. So moving on, item 11A, we have no public hearings. Item 12A, ordinances and resolutions for consideration, we have none this evening again. And so moving on to item 13A, Mr. Stewart.
This is a consideration possible action to approve a proposed design for the downtown Bellflower Wayfinding Project RFP. And I believe we have Anika Mayor Cheryl Ruiz, who's going to start this explanation for us.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, we're going to be bringing you two strong designs for council to consider implementing in the downtown. Blue Media was recently awarded the RFP for the Metro Call for Projects Wayfinding Grant. And the consultant will be presenting this evening. John Temple and Rich Gomez are both on the call tonight and Mr. Temple has prepared a PowerPoint to show. Mr. Temple, are you okay to take it from here?
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. We're, we're happy to be here tonight and share with you our progress to date on the, the wayfinding for downtown Bellflower. At this point, I share my screen. Is my screen visible?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it is.
Well, great. So we've been working with staff over the past several weeks and the goal here is to, you know, come up with a wayfinding program for the downtown. We, we have some practical goals of reducing sign clutter. Of course, we want to get people to, to the destination. We want to get them parked and out of their car and on foot and find what the downtown has to offer. So we're going to be showing you two different design directions this evening. These, each design direction is expressed in vehicular wayfinding signs for people driving into the downtown. We also have parking specific directional signs to get people to either the open lots or the new parking structure. We have pedestrian directional signs to highlight those destinations for people on foot. And we have a map directory to also show what, what the destinations offerings are in downtown. Both of these design directions really want to create a sense of place for the downtown.
Mr. Temple, if I may just apologize, but are we supposed to be changing the screen? I'm not sure that we're seeing what you're presenting.
I, I'm almost done with my preamble. Show you the, the designs in one second. So I appreciate that. These designs, we, we want to differentiate Bellflower and even though these are focused on the downtown, we want to make sure that the public is aware that when they've entered the downtown, entered Bellflower, that they're, it's distinctive from, from that of your neighbors. And lastly, we want to kind of recognize the historic nature of Bellflower in the downtown area with some of your historic buildings and using that as a design direction. But we also want to celebrate the, the new exciting offerings of, of the downtown. So with that, I will start to go through these designs. This is design option A, and this is a vehicular directional sign. We have estimated five locations for this kind of sign along Bellflower and Flower Street to get to major destinations. And this design, as you'll see on this slide and the next couple of slides, and I'm going to zoom in here. So you can see the qualities here, but it takes kind of a historic look to this with the arched top. We're incorporating the downtown of Bellflower logo. And we have a kind of homage to the logo itself with the flowers kind of screened back here at the bottom of the panel. So and we also want to be, be conscious of the back of the sign and, and treat that in a way that's going to look good and kind of emphasize the, the colors and branding of the downtown. So we'll move on to the other sign types of option A. We have parking specific signs to get people to those, those lots and to the parking structure. And those are represented by the green dots here. We have quite a few. And then we have the, the parking identification signs in which there are several structures out there with, with existing posts and we, we feel we can retrofit those posts, paint them, clean them up and apply a new sign panel to those. And so roughly half of those locations of the orange dots would be a retrofit condition and we think that would be a cost-effective way to, to get this new signage out there on, on public streets. In this case, we have a screen catch-up here. We're utilizing the back of the sign here to reinforce the, the logo and the city branding. And I'll move on to the last of the three slides for Concept A here. This is we have the pedestrian directional signs represented by the kind of purple dots. And we have a map directory on a wall within the parking structure that's been identified as a key location. This map itself is, is going to be developed by us. This is just a placeholder at this point, but we'll be working with staff to identify the key destinations on that map as well. So this is Concept A. If there are no questions, I will move ahead to Concept B.
Uh, Mayor, can I speak? All right. So the one that you're offering here initially with a rounded top that you thought was exemplify a historical aspect, is that what you said?
Yes, in terms of the, the shape of the sign itself and the idea was to have a a unique sign shape that would be visible from a distance and you would recognize that as, as Bellflower once the system was in place.
To me, it looked like a tombstone. If that's your, if that was your after, you, you accomplished it, but that looks like a tombstone to me.
Maybe I should move on to Concept B.
Took the wind out of the sails on that one, but I'm just offering my opinion as to is there other possible shapes other than a tombstone?
Well, there, there are a lot of ways that this could go and to create a, a unique shape with a, a different type of profile, you know, whether it, it has a rounded top, it could, you know, there, there are several different directions. I, I guess, you know, this being signs mounted up on poles, 10 feet in the air, we didn't feel it had that, that kind of quality of, of a tombstone, but I, I can see your point.
Thank you. All right, proceed. I didn't mean to take all the wind out of your sails, but I just wanted to make sure you knew what I saw.
Well, I appreciate that, but we'll, we'll keep going here and, and hopefully there, there won't be anything in Concept B that I, I didn't see coming. With this design, we're utilizing some of the, the kind of decorative, maybe Art Deco features that we've, we've seen in some of the downtown buildings, creating kind of a border frame. And in this case, we're, we have a, a kind of cutout version of the logo which is applied on the top and gives us a little bit more distinctive profile. And we're using the back of the sign almost in a banner-like way to to really showcase the logo and make sure that the, the back of the sign has a, has a effect similar to the front. So this is Concept B and I'll run through these variations for you. For the parking directional signs, and again, we're retrofitting the, with the existing poles out there. And utilizing the back of the sign as, as I indicated. And lastly, for the pedestrian directional signs and the map directory. All with similar details meant, meant to be viewed as a kind of family of signs. And the last slide here is sort of a side-by-side comparison of these in order to have the council be able to evaluate these as a group. So I, at this point, I open it up for, for comments and, and would appreciate input on, on design and any other elements.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Temple. Let's start off with Mayor Proton Kupps.
I'm leaning more towards your second rendition than I am to the first, but you know the reason why. So I'm just one member up here. Let's hear what the others have to say.
Up next, Councilmember Denton.
Thank you, Mayor. On the, on the screen, it shows that is, is it, they're slightly different tones of blue because of this, the, you're trying to separate them what they look like, or is it, that's the color?
They do have a slightly different tone of blue. I, I guess the A has a lighter tone with a darker border around it. And B is sort of the reverse with a darker blue.
Yeah, so it's okay. So basically, yeah, that's because of the back of the sign. What I'm seeing as an A, the back of the sign has kind of got the colors of the face of the B and similar vice versa in the blue. But I remember when you showed the back of the sign on the pole sign, I don't think it was, I'm going to say for lack of, you know, more of a purple blue. But I don't, colors color. We're just looking at design right now. I kind of like the tombstone version of the sign. They match the existing public parking signs. The monument, the monument sign is what drives me. We have several monument signs. How many monument signs are we looking to put up?
Ultimately, about 11. About half of those would be retrofit.
Got it. And the, because if you look at the monument sign, it says public parking right in front of you versus because there's more room to put the downtown Bellflower logo up in the, the hump part of it. You look at the monument sign, it just says parking. Can't really see the, the logo. And then that, the flower on B, that's more of like a, a cutout, laser cut plan on, is that what that is?
That's correct.
Got it. Anyway, those are my pros and cons with them. I, I kind of like the A better. It looks more nostalgic.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Denton. Up next, Councilmember Santaynez.
Thank you, Mayor. I like Mr. Kupps' comment about tombstone, but when I was looking at that, it, Mr. Temple, just in fairness to you, I saw it not as a tombstone, more of a historic plaque. That's how I saw the design. It's a historic plaque. You know, those, when you go to a historical place, there's, this was built in so many years, something like that. I, I saw that design there, but it's kind of a balance. And I see, I see your point, Mr. Kupps, too. So I see that. Mr. Temple, a couple of questions. In terms of the color, I want to follow up from the question of Mr. Denton. Between the lighter, between the color of A and B, how long will this color last? Because I'm, I'm concerned about fading. Eventually, the color is going to fade. Let's face it, okay? It's going to be permanent. So how long do you think this fading will, will kind of appear in terms of the sign? Whether we use A or B?
I, I wouldn't see a, a distinction between A or B as, as having a different longevity of, of the color. Perhaps my team member here, Rich Gomez, might chime in. Rich is the, is going to be fabricating and, and installing these with his company, Blue Media, and has more of a technical expertise on the materials. Rich, are you able to unmute? Apparently not.
Well, I guess you have to answer the question.
Well, I, I would say that these, these would all be done with 3M vinyl sign products which have a inherent warranty. And I, I, I'm not going to quote the warranty because I will.
Hello?
But they, they are.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Rich.
Hello?
We can hear you, Rich. So the, the materials are all going to be standard highway sign level of materials with the vehicular signs having reflective quality to, to the lettering. So they'll, they'll be visible at night. And they will have the standard warranty of that vinyl traffic material that, that is used on, on all high traffic signs.
And how many years, and how many years is that?
Hey, John, can you hear me?
Yes, Rich.
Oh, I was having some technical difficulties. I apologize. Completely went silent here.
So can you respond to how long these would last in the environment, particularly with fading?
Correct, yes. I, I can actually. We will be using, and this is Rich Gomez with Blue Media, by the way. Thank you. We'll be using all 3M product and 3M has some wonderful long-lasting product. We'll also be using a UV overlay over the graphics which will enhance and, and keep from fading for several years. Offhand, I believe 3M's warranty for their sheeting and their ink and their overlays is 10 years in Southern California.
Okay. Okay, good. I think 10, 10 years is very reasonable. My next question is, Mr. Temple, or have you seen the directional sign on Bellflower and Belmont?
I, I can't picture it if I have.
Okay, because that's one of our more, more famous, because I'm trying to envision the, in terms of size, how this directional sign compares to what we currently have.
Councilmember Santaynez, are you talking about the large parking sign, free parking sign?
No, no, the word shows what kind of things you, you will encounter when you turn right as you go north on, on Bellflower Boulevard. You know, where the kiosk car?
Oh, yes, the small.
Oh, yes, the small pedestrian car sign.
So in terms of comparison, because I can say that those are hard to read. So I'm trying to kind of envision how large these fonts are compared to what we currently have.
Okay, I now recall the sign that you're referring to. And that sign, the ones that we're showing here for vehicular traffic would be much larger and more visible. The letter height that we're suggesting on these studies is between three and a half and four inches, which tends to be our standard for this type of vehicular directional sign. The size of the pedestrian directionals is much smaller, given that people have the ability to stop and read and sort out those destinations. And I would say that those messages that we're seeing on the pedestrian signs here are probably more comparable to the existing sign that you're referring to. But these smaller ones are not meant to be viewed from a car or read from a car. They're strictly for pedestrian.
No, but if you're driving and you're close to the intersection, you should be able to read those signs, right?
We've found it's better to distinguish those two audiences and to create simple, large messages to get the drivers to the destination and get them parked. And we actually prefer that the pedestrian signs be oriented and directed to pedestrians and not have a driver try to read a much smaller type of sign from the vehicle.
Oh, I see. So these are geared towards pedestrians, not drivers?
The larger signs, yes, are geared towards drivers, the smaller are geared towards pedestrians.
Okay. And then my next question is to staff. Regarding your inventory of signs here, where you have 13 parking... Are these just along Bellflower Boulevard? Or could be in the back of Bellflower Boulevard?
It's Anika. Councilmember Santaniz, there is a range in which this grant will cover specific streets along the transit-oriented development. And therefore, we've set some parameters in which the wayfinding grant will cover as for now. If we choose to move forward down the road and extend signs, we do have at least the concept from the downtown already implemented, and we can bleed out a little bit further from there.
Okay, so for example, Anika, for example, let's say the parking lot, the public parking lot next to the post office, there's a sign there for public parking. So will that be replaced? Is it part of discount?
Yes.
Oh, it is? Okay, good. Alright, very good. And then, Mr. Temple, on your option B. I was kind of imagining the flower is not really, it doesn't stand out, the cutout of the Dahlia flower. So it's not really prominent to me. It's hardly, it's very hard to distinguish it. It's not prominent. Did you try to kind of raise it up a little bit? To become, to make it more prominent, so at least you can see it from a distance that you're talking about a flower? Because it sounds like it's kind of, it's just peeking over that horizontal line.
We could definitely look at ways to make the flower more prominent, whether it's lifting it up or enlarging it. I think it, we do want that to be read easily and quickly. And that's, you have such a great logo and it's used everywhere that we want to be consistent and make sure that that's seen as a part of this sign group.
Yeah, I know it's a great logo, but it seems like it's very shy right now to me. It's not like, it's not showing. Because as I said, it's only raised up and the cutout very tiny. You can hardly see it from a distance. So if you're trying to kind of brand this, I would try to raise it up and see how it looks.
Okay, we can look at that.
Alright, thank you. That's all I, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember Santaniz. Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, gentlemen, thank you for the presentation. When I first picked up the report and saw the exhibit A, I was saying, please, go beyond squares and rectangles. So thank you for the added two designs. And I'm very thankful that the Mayor Proton spoke first. I would have said grave marker, but that's... But I... A, to me, is more of the traditional, it would more so complement traditional Spanish architecture, possibly. And with the rounded top. I just, last night, I watched Texas Rising. I saw the picture of the Alamo and remind me of the top of the Alamo. But B, you had mentioned art deco, but it, to me, it could complement more of the blend of architectural styles that we have in the downtown. We have some older art deco-ish, newer art deco-ish, and we have modern. And I do agree with the comment from Councilmember Santaniz. I think the flowers right now, it looks like just buds right now. And I think they need to be in full bloom, so a little more prominent. And I think just personally, B, even, I think that's, to me, the Bellflower blue of sorts. But then you look at the logo behind us here at the dais, and it has both, has a lighter blue and a dark blue. But I'd prefer the more contrast rather than a lighter background with white letters, a darker background and with white letters. I think it, to me personally, stands out better. I think this, to me, B fits better with the, again, with the blend of architectural styles. And I think it definitely, to me, fits in better. You know, at the beginning of the downtown on the south along the freeway, we added the flowers to the, you know, the fronts of the underpasses. So I think that feature is something I think we're looking to make it stand out throughout the town. So I'm going with B right now, if that's where I'm at. Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada. For myself, I agree. I think I'm more partial to design B. Not that there's anything wrong with A. I think it's nice. But I think, again, because of the mixture of different styles that we have within our Boulevard, I think B kind of checks off every box with that. And just about every question that I had has been already asked. The only two things that I have outstanding that have been asked is, one is regarding the actual reflectiveness of the lettering at night. I'm not sure where these signs are going to be at, if there's going to be a lot of lighting. Or is the lettering in these signs going to be pretty reflective so that when people are walking or driving at night, that these directional titles will be able to stand out?
Yes, absolutely. And that's part of what we would specify with, as Rich said, the 3M product that is a highway-grade vinyl for that reflectivity. And we would, any sign that is meant to be read from a vehicle, so the large vehicular sign, the parking sign, both parking signs, would have that materiality and that reflective quality. We would not do that on the pedestrian signs for similar reasons that I gave earlier. We want to differentiate the pedestrian signs, and we don't want those to be mistakenly read from a car.
I can comment a little bit more, John, if you'd like.
Sure.
Yeah, as far as the reflectivity, what we'd be using for, in particular, the vehicular-oriented signs is what's called a 3M Series 4000 DG Cube reflective sheeting. It's the most reflective. It's the purest white sign sheeting on the market. It's what you're seeing in any of our highways in California, the big green overhead highway signs. It's that particular sheeting from 3M. There is nothing more reflective on the market when a headlight hits it.
Great, thank you for that. And then the last question I have is regards to the actual, the map itself. If I remember correctly, that's envisioned to be in our parking structure?
Correct.
Right, and so would that be, like, would that have a backlight to make it stand out? Or is that envisioned to be under a lit area? I'm not sure if you or maybe a member of staff would be more appropriate to answer that question. I just, I would like to make sure that it lights up or that it's pretty visible no matter the time of day in our parking structure. So I'll stand by for an answer.
Yeah, I think we would, we need to investigate that location and understand the ambient lighting or that kind of quality. But I couldn't agree more. It needs to be able to be read all times, day and night. And we will investigate that and make sure that the lighting is either ambient lighting, or if it needs supplemental lighting, we'll address that.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Temple. That completes my questions. Gentlemen, any other questions, comments before we move on?
Yes.
Mr. Dutton, go ahead.
Is there a reason that we've, we're only putting in the inventory of one map kiosk? I can kind of think of maybe, you know, there may be other locations.
I can kind of jump in right there. The map kiosk was added by staff kind of at a last minute. It was presented in the original RFP, and staff really kind of flocked to that idea, thinking that would be a great addition to the parking structure. And so we are still working out a count with Blue Media for that. But it was the first initial thought was adjacent to the elevator. There's a nice blank wall that would fit for pedestrian wayfinding.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Coops, would you?
Yes.
So my question is, and maybe it's written in the sample board, are these that got a coating to allow for graffiti removal? Does it look like a good target for graffiti?
I will lean on Mr. Temple for that answer, or Mr. Gomez. They are resin. They're a type of resin on the top of it. I don't know if it's anti-graffiti, though.
I think for anything that is, would be low enough to be touched, we would definitely want that anti-graffiti coating. The other signs that are mounted up high, we generally don't have an issue with those. But I think the map and the low parking sign would qualify for getting that. And that's something we tend to specify as a standard. But Rich, do you have anything to add?
Yes, and just to touch on what John just, John's comment, anything that's low enough, like we just, like John just mentioned, would get either a clear coat, which we'd probably do a clear coat spray, anti-graffiti clear coat. And then on the other signs, we would do probably anti-graffiti sheeting or film over it.
Okay.
Yes, we'll definitely address the graffiti issue.
You know, if you put a coating on there, it might allow it to be cleaned a little bit easier, more effectively.
Absolutely.
Councilman Santaniz brought up the idea that there could be some fading of the blue color. And I would use the street signs that we currently have, and I can't notice them fading. If they use the same kind of paint and color. And the Dahlia on there is pretty well exhibited as well. You know, even though it's a small sign, being it's only a street sign, it's not as large as these, but we're able to display the Dahlia in such a way that it blends in with the sign. But I think if they use the color blue that we use on the street signs, should tie into that. Use the same reflective white lettering, which I always love the way our signs reflect at night, especially when you're looking for an address at night. And have the same kind of Dahlia that's a little more pronounced. I think we've got a winner.
I can comment on your street signs. The product, the material that is used on your street signs is exactly what we're going to be using for these signs.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mayor Proton. I'd like to piggyback a little bit on what Councilmember Dutton brought up before regarding the map. I'm not sure if I misinterpreted what you mentioned before, Mr. Councilmember Dutton. But, you know, I think we're going to have numerous parking locations throughout the downtown. And I think there may be an opportunity for us to give you park, let's say, down by, towards Franks, where there could be a map down there as well during that parking area. Did I misread what you were saying, or?
No, that was exactly it. And then Anika answered my question. And she says, this is, they thought of it in the 11th hour, so to speak. And they're just needed to plant something. They thought it would be good on the parking structure. But they had ideas going, putting them at other locations, too. But we, I think we're here tonight to pick a design so they can move forward on the grant.
So you're satisfied?
Yeah, I'm satisfied. Yeah, staff is, it sounded like staff is thinking about putting some more here and there.
Great.
But they got to come up with an inventory before they apply the grant.
Okay, not a problem. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I'm happy that staff is exploring that, so. Okay, great. Any other questions, comments, gentlemen, regarding the designs? If not, then I'd like to open it up for public comments. So Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to make comments regarding this evening's item 13A?
Yes, Mayor. I'll give the public just a moment to use the raised hand feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comments at this time.
Thank you for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Okay. Gentlemen, final questions, comments? If not, I will consider a motion.
I'll go ahead and move if we choose B.
So I have a motion.
With the recommendations of, not to say that it can be done or whatever, but we're not designing, we're here for designing tonight. But just think of our recommendations, like Sunny, the bigger logo.
Yep, if I remember correctly, the more prominent flower.
Raised logo, yes.
And the, explore the, how much of the map itself stands out. I know the reflectivity was already, the lettering was already addressed. And then I know there were submissions regarding maintenance.
Great graffiti removal, coating.
So any other comments? If none, then I have a motion by Councilmember Dutton, and a second by Mayor Proton Coops. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santaniz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye. Thank you for that, staff. Great presentation. Thank you, Mr. Temple. And we look forward to hearing or seeing what comes next of this. Thank you. Alright, item number 14, consent calendar. Are there any items that any of my colleagues wish to be polled for separate consideration or discussion?
I'd like to pull item 14E just for a comment.
So item 14E just for separate, not consideration, but just a comment, right?
Just a comment.
Okay. Any other items wish to be polled? Alright, seeing none, so why don't we address item 14E first, then?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity. This item 14E is to amend the agreement with Ms. O'Neill. And I just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank... And I just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank, uh, Ms. O'Neil for her work at the Citibell Flower. I think she's been involved in so many projects, more than what was discussed in the staff report. And, um, specifically want to commend her for her work, um, starting with the, the Belmont Court, where she, um, negotiated a deal with, um, Folfeilberg, and then the operators of the Korean barbecue, and, uh, and also the Japanese restaurant. And also lately, uh, which was not in the staff report, she was very instrumental in, in assisting Ricky's in their relocation to downtown Bellflower, and especially the patio, which I think, uh, became, came, came in very handy, especially with this pandemic. So, uh, this item is really worth of extending the contract with, uh, Ms. O'Neil. And it's, again, I just want to publicly commend her for her contributions, uh, to the Citibell Flower, and she is a, a great part of our city's team. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Santanez. I, I second that, I concur. Any other questions, comments regarding fourteen E? Uh, hearing none, I will consider a motion regarding the consent calendar. So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Santanez, and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santanez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye.
Thank you for that, Madam City Clerk. Item number fifteen, council reports. Councilmember Dutton?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. I would just like to, uh, thank the residents of the city of Bellflower for, uh, passing Measure M. And with the, right now, they're still counting with a sixty-six percent vote. You know, we're looking at two-thirds, so that is huge. And, uh, the people have spoke, and this is a big deal for Bellflower for the next decades. It just goes to show that, how we here on the dais, myself and my colleagues, have been frugal over the years with the money, and, uh, the things that we have been done with this, this town in the last ten years as a team have, have got it going the right direction. And the will of the people trusts us to do even better. And, uh, I'd just like to thank the residents of the Bellflower for passing Measure M, and, and with a large margin. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Dutton, uh, Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you. Uh, first, uh, would be to echo the comments, uh, by my colleague about Measure M. Again, uh, it's, uh, looking good. Um, let's see, on the twenty-ninth of October, uh, I, I attended, uh, the ICSC Holiday Spending Outlook webinar, and, uh, just some tidbits of info. They project a two percent increase year over year, so it's still looking okay. Uh, eight point six billion to be spent, uh, uh, by, uh, Christmas time, uh, during the shopping season. Most people will still go to the stores in person, they, they say eighty-one percent. Whereas, um, but, uh, more and more people are shopping online, uh, they, they indicated forty-three percent. Uh, most, and, uh, there's some sectors that are doing very well. Uh, building materials, everybody is sitting around at their home, seeing what they need to do, and so they're spending money at, at those places. Uh, food and beverage is up, uh, um, uh, seven percent. Uh, electronics is up twenty-five percent. And, uh, spending at Amazon is at sixty-six percent. So, um, uh, on, um, November fifth, I attended, uh, the SCAG Transportation Committee and the Regional Council. They, uh, there's a number of things that, um, the council approved, um, the release of the, uh, draft twenty-twenty-one, uh, Federal Transportation Improvement Program, uh, for, for public review. And the public review period is from November sixth through December seventh. And, uh, again, uh, this program emphasizes, uh, the maintenance of the region's, uh, again, transportation system. Uh, it involves over two thousand projects and thirty-five billion dollars over six years, and also generating, uh, one hundred and four thousand jobs per year. Um, the, uh, council also approved the, the Sustainable, um, uh, you know, Community Program for Housing and Sustainable Development. Um, it's the call for application, so there's some possible grant money out there. We also, uh, looked at, uh, the Rena appeals. I think there are now fifty-two appeals. Hearings are scheduled from December eleventh through possibly up to February ninth. So, um, I know this city is, uh, has appealed. Last week, I, uh, saw the activity at the Veterans Memorial, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I woke up Memorial, so I popped in, saw the activity. It's looking awesome, guys. So, uh, it's gonna be a, a great day, uh, this Wednesday morning. And this past Saturday, I attended, uh, or I dropped off some household hazards and e-waste, uh, about nine-thirty, and I was, uh, first in line. So, and then I talked to some people after, and, uh, they said, uh, some very short lines, but it was, uh, well-attended, I believe, and, uh, the county is very efficient with this. And it, it moves very smoothly. And, uh, uh, so, uh, give it to them, don't put it in the trash, or don't put it in the gutter. So, that's what I'd like to present, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada. Uh, up next, Councilmember Santanez.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna piggyback on the comment about the election from Councilmember Dutton and Hamada. And, uh, again, I wanna thank our, uh, voters for, uh, voting on Measure M. It was a two-to-one ratio. And, and to me, the most important thing is you trust us with your money. So I think, uh, you know, that, um, we will be using this money, um, very frugally and very, um, efficiently, uh, to better our city. I also wanna piggyback on the household, uh, waste, uh, uh, collection last Saturday. Um, thanks to L.A. County Public Works and the Sanitation District and our staff, and through their work, rain or shine, they were collecting. So I was towards the end of the collection period, about two-thirty, I think, when I went, and they were still there, um, very busy. Uh, is Mr. Grecky on the line? Len?
Yes, I'm here, uh, Councilman.
Okay, uh, thank you, Len. Um, remember, we've, we've been talking about the, the sidewalk on Stevens Avenue? And, uh, last week, I saw a couple, a guy who was taking pictures and photos walking on the, uh, east side of Stevens. And, uh, I'm assuming that he is working on the, uh, the sidewalk project on Stevens. Can you confirm that?
Yeah, they're, they're starting to do their survey work out there, and, uh, the, come up with the design for the remaining, uh, parcels that, uh, will be getting sidewalk there.
Okay, and I, also, I got a couple of inquiries, uh, about the sidewalk, uh, a couple of months ago. Um, can, can you give us some kind of a, uh, tentative, uh, timeline in terms of the start date and completion?
If, if all goes well with the design, uh, and we get it wrapped up here pretty quick, we'll, we'll try to get it done by the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Uh, that's all, hi, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you for that, Councilmember Santanez, uh, Mayor Protem Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that was brought up earlier when we did the consent calendar was, uh, here Santanez brought up, uh, our, uh, restaurant consultant, Liz O'Neil. Story starts about twelve, thirteen years ago when Mr. Egan was here, and turned to Mr. Dutton and I and said, uh, you're our Economic Development Committee, figure out what to do with restaurants. Now, so you're asking a appliance repairman and a mechanic how to put restaurants together. He was able to find Elizabeth O'Neil, and Elizabeth has just had her fingerprints on everything that's on the boulevard, having to do with food and drink. I mean, we're starting on In-N-Out, Franks, Golden Corral, uh, the firefighter, uh, place that failed, now can, Firehouse, through. And she continues to, uh, oppose helping get a permit for smoking. Uh, there's so many parts of the boulevard that we would not have if it wasn't for her connections and her expertise. Uh, she really created Ricky's from the ground up. We gave her an empty building and said, figure it out. She did the menu, she did the, the interior, she did the appliances, she did the plates. She, she signed everything that goes on in that restaurant. So I just didn't wanna get past knowing that we really appreciate what she's done and what she will continue to do in our town, that she's made a difference. I've had other city councilmen call me and ask, how did you do it? And, uh, you know, who did you hire? And, but she's been loyal to us and kept us moving in the right direction. I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge that a little bit more. Also, I wanna thank the public that, uh, supported the Measure M. As stated before, we try to use every dollar in the most fruitful way possible. So know that it's no fun to exact another tax, point seven-five on top of your sales tax, but we're gonna use that money in a way that you'll find will continue the growth in Bellflower, the safety in Bellflower, the continuity in Bellflower, so that you'll be proud to live here. And we wanna thank you for, your support, thank you for our confidence in our council. We appreciate the fact that you, you trust us, and it shows by the measure. We, uh, we don't always agree on everything on the council, but by and large, we pulled together in the right direction, especially on important issues like this that affect everybody in the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for those comments, Mayor Protem Coops. Uh, I, let me start off by just thanking everyone for voting. Again, I think as, as a veteran, um, it means a tremendous amount when, I think we as veterans see our residents that are able to go and vote, that they vote. Um, and so when we saw the numbers that we saw this past Tuesday, it's, uh, as a veteran, again, thank you for exercising that right that, that so many veterans, um, have sacrificed for all of us to collectively be able to undertake. Um, on Measure M, I just really wanna commend the residents for the investment that they're making in, in their city. Um, sixty-six percent margin, that's a really significant margin of, of, of trust, um, considering the times. Um, I, I just, I don't wanna rehash what was already stated here before, they were all valid comments, and I just wanna add to that in that, um, the one comment that I kept making to people is that, is that first of all, is that a significant amount of the tax generated here in our city actually is generated by people that come from the outside. So, um, and that's a, a significant talking point. The, the next one is that, um, if we as consumers go to another city, any other surrounding city, um, we already pay that tax. Um, so it's just a matter of, of reinvesting that money here in Bellflower, and by people that come to shop in Bellflower and have a good time in Bellflower, for them to invest it here. Um, and, and frankly, just to be able to keep that money here in our city. I think none of us takes pleasure in enacting a tax. But I think the, um, that keeping local money local is crucially important. Um, and, and I, I kept stating, if it doesn't stay here, it's gonna go somewhere else. And I'd rather it stay here than go somewhere else. So again, to the public, thank you for that significant trust in, in passing Measure M. Um, it's gonna keep our city, your city, your community in a very good state for a very long time. So again, I commend you for, for approving that. I also, um, in District Four, the election that happened with District Four, um, I commend the residents and the voters of District Four for electing, uh, their councilmember-elect, who will be seated here on December fourteen. And so I wanted to, uh, congratulate and commend, uh, Councilmember-elect Victor Sanchez. Uh, but also, I wanted to commend every single candidate that ran for city council from District Four. I, um, putting your name, uh, on a ballot is, is, is easy. Um, it doesn't really take much to be able to get on the ballot, but to mount a campaign and to put in effort, um, it really takes a significant amount of time and effort. And so to all the candidates in District Four, um, you're all leaders, and I commend you for, for, uh, presenting yourself to your residents. And again, I wanted to just commend District Four residents and voters for, um, for participating and for their selection. Um, and on top of that, I wanted to commend all the voters in Bellflower for their election on the Bell, the, uh, Bellflower Unified School District. Obviously, this, this is not the body for that, but that is an investment in the future of our community, um, the election of school board members, and so I wanted to commend the voters for that, and for the election of, uh, Dr. Swayhousen and, and Mayor Garza for, um, for their upcoming seats on the Bellflower Unified School District Board. And then last but not least, um, this past Saturday on November seventh, I was invited, uh, by the Ms. Bellflower, um, group, uh, to present awards to their, um, their young ladies in their year of service. And so I was honored and appreciative of the invitation. Um, and just like they've done during COVID, um, you know, they, Saturday was cold, it was windy, it was rainy, and you wouldn't have been able to have told by, uh, just looking at these really special young leaders and ladies that we had there on Saturday. Um, and so I, I, always a smile, always with fortitude, and I just wanted to commend them for their service to our community in a really truly unprecedented year that we've had. And nonetheless, they've served our community, so I wanted to commend them for their year of service. And so, uh, with that, I would like to adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council, which will be at five-thirty P.M. on Monday, November twenty-third, twenty-twenty. It is eight-twenty-eight by my watch, and this meeting is adjourned.